Twenty-five thousand. They have to match it with five thousand, correct?
Yeah, I think you're referring to the twenty-five thousand dollar contribution to the repair fund.
Right.
What we did, Councilman, and I think you and I've talked about it, but for the whole council, we are struggling this year to keep up with the repair costs at the Orr Museum. And the feeling is that we needed a different mechanism in order to channel our contribution. We looked at the baseball stadium. As you know, we have a repair fund at the baseball stadium where we and the Schuckers each make a contribution to a fund, and those funds are then used for major repairs. So we thought that would work, and that'd be a way for us to put a cap, if you will, on the amount of money we're spending for repairs at the Orr. So, the way the agreement reads, and this has been to the Orr, you know, for comment, the way that agreement reads, that we would contribute twenty-five thousand dollars right up front into a fund that they would manage, and they would match or put a minimum of twenty-five thousand into that fund, and then it would be used for major repairs. Once that cap is exceeded, everything's on them. Now, obviously, in a catastrophic situation, they could come back to the council and ask for help, but we're trying to put a cap on what we're spending down there. This year, we will spend ninety, over ninety thousand dollars in repairs, in addition to over a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in electric bills. And we just felt like, we don't want to walk away from the Orr. It's a beautiful and important museum in our city, along with the others we have, but we needed to put a cap on, and if you will, let them have a little more skin in the game. So that's the way we set it up. I think it'll work nicely because it gets us, right at the beginning of the year, capped as to how much we're going to spend, and it gets them managing that fund. So that means they're going to decide whether to call the elevator repair company when the elevator's down, whether they're going to call it an emergency and pay extra, or maybe wait a while. Or are they going to find, are they going to use a handyman to do fixed little things that maybe, you know, don't need a repair contract? Now, we will still respond to emergencies. The Public Works Department still has a hotline that they'll call if there's something happening, and we will respond, and if there's an emergency, say there's a pipe broke and the water's rushing, or, we've had some here in the last couple of weeks like that, we would respond with our people, just to be able to stop the emergency and return it, you know, if it is a case of safety or immediate damage to the facility, we would respond. But once the emergency was corrected, then they, if there was work that had to be done by a contractor, they would call the contractor, and they would pay that contractor out of the repair fund. We think this mechanism will allow us to still contribute to the repair of that museum, repairs, but cap our city contribution. So that's the way we set that up, different than we did from the seafood museum. And you all understand, I know, that the museums are similar but different, and that we do not own the Orr Museum. We own the seafood museum building.
I was going to explain that to them, that they own that building, the seafood museum we own. That is part of the city. That's the big difference. But that's just one thing, I just want to make sure we had that straight, because I think it's a good thing. You always keep people in control, supposedly, you know. So what else we got? Is it still my turn, or what?
Still your turn.
Still my turn, alright. I don't like A. First of all, this pedestrian crossover is a waste of money. Y'all can say what you want, you're spending two and a half million dollars to put up a tube, who's going to control it? Who's going to light it? You're going to pay the air conditioning, elevators? Is that all city responsibility? So where we going with this thing? Who's putting all the money out after it's built? We have to maintain all that? The city? I think it's a waste of money, anyway, but I'm just, I mean, you got one right here, you're building one for one park garage, another park garage, three and a half million, now you're going to spend two and a half million on another one that goes nowhere? So, I mean, I just think it's a waste of money, but I mean, I don't want this bill to fall back on the city, and all of a sudden, after you spend a two and a half million, it's going to cost fifty, sixty, seventy thousand a year. Police going to be there, fire going to be there, who's going to run this thing? Who's going to keep it clean? City? The added expense you creating with this thing that serves no purpose. You have to walk through a stoplight to go to this.
Right.
Makes no sense to me, but anyway, so I'm totally against A.
No comment.
Okay, did I not finish? I found out one thing, I couldn't understand why we couldn't handle our own fire extinguishers. Well, they told me we can't be the inspector and tag them. You have to have somebody outside the fire department to do that, correct? On this fire extinguishers, we hired somebody to go, you know, y'all go through businesses and check all the fire extinguishers?
Right.
Now we have to have somebody to check the city fire extinguisher. Can you explain it to me, because that didn't make any sense to me.
The fire department checks to see if the tags are on the extinguishers, but the extinguishers have to be examined periodically to make sure that the powder in them, or the propellant in them, is working properly. So they have to be inspected by an independent company. And so that's what, you know, we go out and do an annual inspection on a business, and we just check the tag to make sure that the company has inspected it and it's working properly.
Yeah, that's what explained to me yesterday, I just wanted to make sure that's how it worked. I just, you know, so here we have another contract with somebody else. I like all the, with closing all these contracts, that, you know, they're going back to either in the pavement fund, or if it's a bond money, it goes back to the bond. I think that's good that you're doing that, and clo, a lot of these things are good that, I thought you couldn't give me something. So those are good things, and get them off the table. Let me see here, we ain't finished. The B monthly news thing, this is just to move money so they could pay bills, that's what they were told. It's not costing us any money, this is advertising money they have to move so they can pay their bills, right? For the B monthly.
I believe this is money that they have received from ads, and this is to allow it to go out of that account to the vendor, to the printing company.
Yeah, I got to make sure I keep what Vincent, because Vincent, it's not going to cost us any money, you know, so I'm making sure we're doing that.
Where is it?
Okay, now we get to D's here. The DD, what does it cost us? On this Howard Avenue, here we got another change order, or what? On this DD?
You want to take that, I don't know what the change order is.
Well, we got two million tied up in this street now.
So this is basically what we just did for the Division Street project as well. When we entered into the contract with Pickering, initially, the design was just for Ranar to Lemieux, but as we went through design, we added the section all the way down to Nixon Street, and then up to MLK. But we never adjusted Pickering's contract for construction administration and RPR for that, the timeframe that's associated with those additional pieces. So this is basically what we're doing, we're just giving them more time.
How is that possible? We didn't.
Well, because when we started design, and we entered the initial contract with Pickering, we didn't, we didn't know we were going to do those parts. As design progressed, and we added, we added different sections, it, we just wasn't thought of in the beginning, so now we need to add to it.
Okay. Alright, and then the last one, that's FF, or whatever they changed this one to. I don't understand why we're giving anybody fifty thousand dollars for, that we've never seen. And I don't know why we're giving them anything in October, November, December, they're not in session. So why are we giving them thirty thousand? Is this a Christmas bonus? What is this money for? I mean, it's not in session, so what are they doing in October, November, December? So I'm totally, I don't like this, anyway. I don't see where we're getting anything from this, where we put this man seventy thousand, and we hadn't got anything back, that I've seen? And now you're running another five-year, five-month contract, they're not even in service. They ain't even working. So no, I'm totally against that. And then the contract that y'all got on this piece of paper, half of it says six months, half says five months. So the contract you got on the agenda is wrong, anyway. So to me, you thought about something ought to be taken off the table, this is it. You want to table something, table the thing until January. That's my suggestion. I'll make that motion.
I have a motion by Mr. Lawrence to table DD, or, I'm sorry, which one?
Oh, they changed it again?
FF.
FF. A motion by Mr. Lawrence to table FF. Is there a second?
I'll second it for discussion.
Alright, seconded by Mr. Barrett. You want to continue anything, Mr. Lawrence? You want to continue?
No, just, that is my thing, they're not working. I'm not paying anybody thirty thousand for nothing. Give me a break, Mike. Thirty thousand? Give me a break. I mean, come on, we're beating up everybody in the public departments, twenty, thirty thousand dollars, and we giving thirty thousand, but somebody ain't doing anything. Fifty thousand, excuse me, but I mean, the first thirty thousand to me should not even, should not be paid.
Mr. Barrett?
Was this fifty thousand dollars included in our expected expenditures from the general fund in our budget talks?
It was. And fifty is in other professional services and the executive grant, the state department?
It's there. I didn't expect to start spending it this early.
And, and I was under, this is something that the mayor and I talked about, and the mayor said that it was in his budget, not in the general fund budget. But it was coming out, I understand they're leaving it, but it's, it's coming out of general fund budget, it's not in the administrative budget. It's, I mean, it's just, you're just moving money from the general fund to the administrative budget. And if the mayor wants to wire out of his budget, I'll do it, but I'm not going to support this coming from the general fund. That's, that's just my opinion. I agree with Mr. Leonard, we've spent seventy thousand dollars to date, and have gotten no reports, nothing from this source. You know, if we saw some positive traction somewhere or something, but we have no, no reports or anything of any progress that's been made, so to date, we've thrown away seventy dol, seventy thousand dollars, and I'm not willing to do, throw away another fifty thousand dollars, or risk throwing away another fifty thousand dollars, until we have some type of report or something from this guy, letting us know that there's some progress or some positive movement with him. That's, so I, I'll vote to table it, if George wants to table it. If he doesn't, I'll vote against this item on the.
The motion is to table right now, and we'll come back if it doesn't pass, and we'll go back to that, that particular one. Any other discussion?
Yes.
Just on tabling it.
No, but I have comments that may determine whether to table it or not, in my mind.
If it's related, go ahead.
Okay, so, Mr. Hurd is a lobbyist. He helps us with the Restore Act. Do we have anybody on staff who's fully knowledgeable and has the expertise to deal with state and federal agencies, and congressmen and legislators on the Restore Act?
We have a grant writer that's part-time, and we have, and we have access to a bunch of webinars that are being, you know, put on by the state, and we're trying to drink and borrow those and learn as best we can, how they're setting up and spread the money around. But we don't have anybody in Jackson, where a lot of this is going on behind the curtain.
Do we have anybody in Washington?
Other than the mayor today.
Okay.
This is on the agenda today because when the announcements came out about the process for the BP money, as well as the process for the infrastructure money that's coming from the internet sales, the mayor said to me, get, get that guy going, we're going to need somebody up in Jackson, talking to the various folks that we don't know, I mean, we, the governor hasn't pointed the panel yet, that's down, to steer the money.
Right, and, and you've got the Gulf Coast Restoration Fund, I think that was part of the special session, I think that's been ironed out to some extent.
I'm putting out words in his mouth, but I think the mayor's concern was that while we had this guy in the budget starting sometime in the next fiscal year, for that same five or six month cycle that we were going to use him for, that we used it for last year, that because of what was going on in Jackson in particular, that we needed to get him moving now.
Right.
That's why I saw that agenda. Does it, does it have to be now, next week, or the week after? I don't know, but I would, I think when he comes back from Washington, maybe a month or another.
But there's other, other federal funding out there, and I'm asking, because I don't know who our expert is on GOMESA, the Office of the Inspector General, on the audit and appeal, audit and appeal, I know that we're dealing with, with some theme and MEMA-related issues. We've got the Keesler Gate inside and outside and related grants. So, I mean, you're talking about millions and millions of dollars, and what I heard you just say is, we can have an expert tomorrow, if, sort of, if somebody goes online and goes to the webinar that the state, state puts on, more or less.
I can say with certainty that I'm certainly not that expert.
Okay. Do you know of anybody else that's an expert, that has, has the knowledge, expertise to keep these things going? Or the relationships?
Not personally, but I've got an excellent grant writer that's been working for us three years.
Okay. That's all.
Alright.
Thank you, Mr. Leonard.
Any other discussion on this motion to table?
Yeah, one, one thing real quick, we have two people who both share a thousand dollars. I thought they supposed to do the job, but I see Cliff Crick, and I thought that's what they supposed to be doing for it. So they don't have the experts? So they're not experts, so what are we doing with them then? I'm just saying, I mean, Joe was in the legislative for several years, like Felix said, he's been out a hell of a while, I don't doubt that, but he's got a hell of a lot of connections, so we've got a lot of people who are not experts.
Yeah, I mean, I think he would be one of the experts.
Say what?
I think Gerald would be one of the experts.
Yeah. So I mean, I said, why would we let him do it?
We, we've not suffered from the lack of asking in the past, we've suffered from the lack of money coming back from our asks.
Right, so I'm not in favor of throwing away another hundred and twenty thousand, because we haven't got anything yet. We already spent seventy thousand. Now you want to spend another fifty? That's my problem.
Anyone else?
Yes, just, just kind of like Dr. Tisdale, when he ran across this litany of things, Keith Hurd, you know, in particular, like the Keesler Gate, he was instrumental in helping us get that, bringing those monies back to Biloxi. So if you start looking at things like that, and what he's already, what he's have already done for the city of Biloxi, and you already have someone who, who's already in the trenches, we need to take advantage of what we already have, and, and the pipeline that he's already started. So if we move away from that, then the monies could dry up easily. Yeah, Gerald Bless had been in the legislative, but that was probably before I was born, so, I don't know if he even know any of these new guys. Thank you.
He was in the divestment.
Alright, the only thing I want to add, I seem to recall, we have asked for the program of work that Mr. Hurd has been working on, what has he accomplished, what has he, what has he done, some bullet points of going forward, what is the plan going forward? So, and, Mr. Leonard, you said whether it starts next week or a couple of weeks, it really doesn't matter, but it needs to start at some point for us to be effective, is that correct?
That's what the mayor's looking for, he knows there's things going on behind the scenes up in Jackson right now, about setting up the group of people who are going to steer the money, and setting up the processes of how the projects will compete. There are things that we don't know, even the five million dollars we need to finish the Keesler Gate outside, we still waiting for, for that money, and it's promised, and with no, nothing happening right now, and we can't, we can't put that job on the street till we get that money.
So if we table this for a week until we get some more information, or maybe Mr. Hurd himself would come here and give us an update, that may be beneficial for.
I don't see any problem with doing that.
I agree with you, Kenny, we were requested that before, but he never came. So I'm thinking that's a good thing to do. I think we just need to hold this thing back until somebody comes, explains to me why I'm wasting thousands of dollars in a month.
Alright, so is that subject to call until we get a report?
Right. Let's do it that way.
Alright, well, I'm hearing a few different things, maybe we table for at least a week, we can always table it again if we, if we haven't gotten the updates that we need. Any other discussions that we can move forward, vote on this motion?
So the motion is to table it for a week?
Right. Okay, all in favor? Opposed? Six one. What is it? Oh, I'm sorry, five. Sorry, Mr. Kemp. Thought he was on his phone. Thought he was on his phone, that's alright. Okay, alright, any other items on the consent agenda? Give everybody a full shot?
No, I, I do have some.
I mean, Mr. Tisdale.
I'm the other Lawrence.
I'm the other Lawrence.
On, on item T, it, I think it's closing out a Brownsfield project, but I really didn't see a description of what or where it was, so I know we're closing it out, but I'm not quite sure what it was.
And, and just in background, Christie, as you get started, there's a whole series there that we're closing out. We normally do this at the end of each fiscal year, I'm not sure it's gotten that much visibility in the past, but we, we try and get all the projects that are closed off the books, so that when we do the revised budget in October, the revised capital project list will just be the active stuff, and not all the old tired, finished jobs. And in some cases, there's a little bit of money left in some of these that we can move around.
What you doing here?
That project was managed by Susan Pickett, so I don't know all of the sites that they did, I think they did three. I know one for sure was Electric Made Bakery, used to be an old gas station, they took out those tanks there. And I believe there was a site somewhere on the point they did, I guess, I think there were three, but I can find out for sure.
Now, remember Electric Made, while you're there.
Yes.
ITC refers to a parent of performance of the government, this town, 2015. This is due with MDE, KFST, Coswell Park, over a period of performance. What is that exactly? What's the significance?
That's just the period of our grant, that's when our grant expires. We are extending it through December.
Okay, next question, DD, this is Pickering, is asking for an extension, and it notes that it was a five-month project, and I think what they're asking for is a two and a half month extension, but in the third whereas, it says, due to construction lasting longer than the five months timeframe, Pickering has submitted amendment number one attached to, here to, as exhibit A, for a time extension of seven and a half months to be added to the contract. I just think that's a typo, that's.
Yeah, I think you're correct.
It should be a two and a half month for a total of seven and a half months.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll verify with Pickering to make sure that you're correct. If y'all like to table it, until we can strike that out.
Yeah, okay, I'd move that we table that till we get this.
To table it until we make the correction, is there a second?
No second.
Ms. Newman, any additional discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries to table it.
Yeah.
Yeah, until it is, subject to call until it's corrected. Whenever they correct it, they can get it done next week, it'll be next week?
I would think so. That's all, Kenny, thank you.
Alright, anyone else? Mr. Barrett, you have anything? Alright, the chairman entertained, well, we'll take a vote on the consent agenda, and then we'll get the exceptions. All in favor of the consent agenda? Motion by Ms. Newman, second. I thought we did, okay.
I'm sorry.
All in favor? Those opposed, the motion carries, now we'll get the exceptions, we'll start with Mr. Lawrence.
Vote against A and F. What we do, we table F? FF? We table that, yeah?
We tabled, okay.
Just A.
Just A for Mr. Lawrence.
Just A.
Mr. Guines?
None.
Ms. Newman? Mr. Tisdale?
None.
Mr. Barrett?
O.
O, and I have none. Alright, let's, in conference hearings, Mr. Creel, begin when you're ready.
There's been a conference case today, uh, on, 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 on,
Just to clarify, is there anyone here to speak on behalf of Terry Toller and Keith and Janet Ollerman? There being no one, this case is closed.
You got that in, Kenny.
Just want to make sure. Alright, motion to approve the routine agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Guines? Second? By Mr. Barrett? Discussion?
I'll need to find out that.
Mr. Guines?
He's close enough to Mr. Guines.
Mr. Guines is deferred to Mr. Lawrence, good for Mr. Lawrence.
Go ahead, Mr. Guines.
Mr. Barrett, we received any money?
How much?
How you doing, Mr. McEwen?
We changed the names today.
He got his picture, he got his picture taken. Mr. Lawrence, you, you want to make a comment?
I want, I'd like to ask one more question since we're in a routine. How do we correct eleven and a half million dollar mistake on the budget that they passed?
We're not, uh, if you, if you would like, we'll set up a special session for you and explain.
I can explain to y'all what y'all done. I mean, I know nobody caught that, so, that was eleven and a half million dollar mistake.
Mr. McEwen, if you would give it with Mr. Lawrence and go over the discrepancy and if we need some formal action, we'll take it at the appropriate time. Mr. Lawrence, I mean, Mr. Tisdale.
Yeah, the Mr. Lawrence, yeah, thank you.
I'll get you, I'll get you straight one of these years.
On Exhibit B, there are two payments for professional services to Sovran, S-O-V-R-A-N, Acquisition LP. Usually I run these down before the council meeting, but Pinky's not been in her office this week, so do we, does that ring a bell off the top of your head? So, Sovran, I don't, I can give you the vendor numbers, twenty-five, twenty-two. On the B docket.
Okay.
Right away, okay, I'll check, no biggie, I'll check, I'll check, I'll get with you, thank you. Thanks for running that down, Mr. Leonard, appreciate it.
Alright, last chance, anybody else on the routine agenda? Alright, call for the question, all in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries? We have a motion to recess. Second? You got the votes? All in favor? Those opposed? We're recessed.